No.
You're right.
We'll call the meeting back to order.
Because they can take over anything they want. Voluntary. Vigilance.
Yep. They can just keep rolling.
We will start with the commissioners.
Six eight. Yep, six eight.
Zero zero six eight?
Yes, sorry.
No, that's fine.
Zero zero six eight. So we're skipping salaries right now.
See, I moved to approve it all. Ninety four.
Fred, we're dead.
Wrong gas for you this time.
There we go. For say, we're going to skip salaries. We'll do those in September.
Yes.
And then we're there.
So the first line that we come to is past salaries, isn't it, is the insurance, is that right?
Yes.
Looks to me like. So we most kind of starts going down through those. There, I know, Donnie, you, that was me and Aaron, and kind of went through a little bit of the budget beforehand, so. But, uh, you know, any questions or anything for the council members would be great. Before us, insurance, it was just increase in insurance premiums.
That's, that's, that's the projection.
Right.
We hope that it doesn't hit that, but better plan for it.
The commissioner, Byron, with us too.
Yes. Sorry. Didn't mean to exclude you, Mr. Byron.
And then you talked about these being premiums. One thing we talked about yesterday as a council as a whole collectively, we talked about just mental health and some options. When the coroner came, was it the coroner presenting yesterday?
Yeah.
The coroner presented yesterday, Otter Crum, and the council as a whole, you were the sheriff and the prosecutor, talked about an option. We'll actually get a service, maybe a standalone service if possible, for mental health for all of our employees, not directly tied to insurance. Where even if you had insurance or if you didn't have insurance, and they didn't run it up, didn't discriminate, they just gave them the ability to tap into just some mental health services. It came up because the coroner was basically saying his employees didn't have it, and they see some pretty traumatic things. So probably something to visit for next year or whatever, but just know that that came up, and we're trying to figure out how to fund it. Excuse me, but that's something that I know the council's looking at.
And we may have to do something a little bit different, because with the coroner, similar to the prosecutor's office and sheriffs, there's, they're looking at specialized first responder type mental health treatment, which would, but looking at mental health overall for the whole county. So there may be a little bit of a distinction between those two.
Yeah, because they are, yeah, they're generally first responders, but the overall mental health and awareness for all of our employees, because people doing stuff on the personal side, just making sure that they have that support, just kidding. So just as an awareness.
We skip, yeah, the rest of it's salary related, so we skipped that, okay.
And you're going on down through just office supplies, it looks like there's even, well, badges was a negative.
Negative on that, that's why you don't need as much as we did in the beginning, so back that way off.
Even the recording page dropped it down a little bit.
Senior Services, that's a contract, right.
That, that's because of, of the increase in, in vehicles and gas that we're using, so we had to take that up, about twelve thousand.
And we are changing, we've increased road preservation to two eight seven four eight nine seven, because we moved road maintenance from food and beverage to that line. Two eight seven four eight nine seven. Training came down. Indirect contract consult came down. Which one?
It's four eighty six, four eighty two, I, we emailed each other about that soon.
Sorry, what is this?
Hold on, it's Aspire, and it's a, it's a number they, DLGF provides us, the state does, so it's, and it did go up. It's four eighty something.
So it's almost at the bottom of page one, Aspire, six eight six eight is the last four digits.
Thank you.
You said DLGF adjusted back there too.
Yeah. That one is sort of maybe, the other one is all a little less full, depending on how much.
Well, while they're pulling that out, let me go back to the indirect and sole contract, what is that for? I see.
Increase by twenty. Okay, can you give the details on that?
It was reduced by forty thousand, we use that for contracting services.
Yeah, speak up, I'm sorry, I brought it up. Your height behind Aspire.
This number is for when we contract with consultants.
What kind of? Is there, there was a line that we saw yesterday or the day before, that was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars something for engineering.
That was on twelve thirty three.
What's the difference?
Twelve thirty three.
Everybody was saying it's not ours, it's not ours, it must be the, the commissioners. So twelve thirty three, there's an engineering and
Architecture.
Architecture, what's the difference between this and what you're saying, a consulting with engineering?
The two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars put in for the engineering on twelve thirty three is for the bank renovations.
All right, we'll, we'll come back to that. So eighty five thousand for engineering consulting, I see there's another line already for ten thousand dollars for consulting and engineering. So you already have ten thousand dollars for consultants for engineering in zero 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 two, so going back to the eighty five thousand.
Isn't that a con, isn't that a ten ninety nine position? The consultant engineer, that's a ten ninety nine.
So we're paying a contractor, I'm paying eighty five thousand.
Twelve thirty three. I got a question on the engineering here, and that's for the Key Bank.
Mr. Byron.
So the indirect, but outside of just engineering, it's anytime we have someone come in and provide additional services, like various K two M.
So majority of the work, we've, we've used that line for all kinds of different analysis, we'll be consulting with you here for a consulting group. There's different things that come up during the year that the commissioners have to, to do that with, and sometimes we don't have time to wait until we get from the council. So that's why we, it's always been there.
That's the consulting engineer and the
Both of those lines have always been there.
And direct engineers, they can be used interchangeably.
Yes.
And you came down twenty thousand.
We've taken on consulting role for the council and for other offices.
And you came down twenty thousand on that this year.
And then outside of, you, you mentioned Caritas and K two M, are they doing any work outside of the Justice Center? They're not, so, so anything that we, that we use it for, wouldn't that be paid out of the jail it? So if they're not doing any other work, well, that's what we'll be paying it for.
Not out of this line at this time.
So we're not paying them out of this line?
They could though.
They could.
That's what I'm saying, I just want to make sure. Okay.
Your new Aspire number is four eight zero zero nine six. Four hundred and eighty thousand, ninety six dollars.
Four hundred and eighty thousand and what is?
Four eight zero zero nine six.
So with, with this budget here in county general, or how are we setting it?
Let me show you this morning, you have cash reserves, but you're, you're about two million out of balance, so let me see what it's like in some places this morning. And I don't know, by all of the changes we just did for Highway Incorporated yet.
What? I would suggest you take the unemployment at the zero. We've been running a credit balance for five years now.
Where, where is that at Debbie?
It's on the first page, Personal Services.
What's the balance in that?
They were credited like eighty eight hundred dollars, so we had that for five years.
Where is it?
First page.
Unfortunately, they won't send us the money, it's, oh, it just stays in the credit balance.
What?
Five one five nine?
I think so.
So I put that in, it's a, it's a seventy five thousand.
Five one five nine.
And right now, it's took the budget about three hundred and fifty dollars. Proceeds two point five four roughly, budgeted first month's two point eight, that's without knowing ledge, and without knowing, like, he might get some of his supplemental next year, but this year, his supplemental is three, three million dollars.
Like you say, we've got a good cash balance, but what we're budgeting this year is
Is out of balance.
Is actually three million more than what we're bringing in.
I mean, right now, right now, the projected operating any balance is forty four percent, so that minus fifteen to twenty five, and think, oh, that's awesome. But you, you know, you don't know what can change it, if it just stays super high, that's also going to affect what you've got to put towards the budget, or comes in for your supplemental, affects what, you know, you have available, because you, a lot of times we get to this point of the year, we say, oh, you're three million out of balance, well, but the, this time we get to the next year, it's closed out twenty three, you know, came in better than we expected, you had more than we expected at the end of the year. So it's kind of a, a measure of gain as to how much you want to accept being over at this point.
Well, I see, I see last year, we only spent three hundred and twenty four thousand dollars legal, and this year, we're, but, oh, twenty four, twenty three.
That was twenty twenty three. That's a contract though.
Right. Can we not reduce our legal costs? Can we not reduce our?
The whole thing is in a contract.
Yeah. Can we not reduce our legal costs?
But you don't want to do an additional if we, if the fee comes up.
No, we cannot reduce it.
We can't reduce that.
Have that in line, make sure that we
Now, this is, I mean, this is one, kind of go back and forth on every time I agree, that needs to be in there, that Debbie doesn't want to do an additional if those fees come up.
Sorry.
Mr. Byron.
You have less than fifty percent left.
I mean, in terms of the budget, I think it's a significant amount.
Carry that number, but.
I know we get questioned a lot about our twenty five hundred dollars a month, but it's a four hundred thousand dollar annual expense. It's up to consider, we're going to have to make a decision now.
The things that are filed on that, it's, it's not just my firm's services, it is landlord, we pay insurance deductibles out of that.
Travelers, Tokyo.
Travelers.
Have we shopped it lately?
Yeah.
We have shopped it?
Yes.
What were the latest bids we got from other firms? Not, not insurance, I'm talking about legal services in general.
Well, all of that stuff has to be paid for.
Yeah.
Through all those.
Yeah, those are deductibles.
We pay deductibles out of
Right.
So this, this is one thing, just, you know, for the council, just to keep in mind, with our good cash balance, with what we've done so far, we're going to be okay. But, but we are spending three million more than we're bringing in, so there's, could be a tie in the future, if that just keeps happening, then we won't be able to, but right now, we, we are so. That is something that always keep in mind.
We also have some budget items that are still duplicated, so we're going to take that into consideration as well.
Okay.
Which of those are duplicate? Oh, just in general.
When, when do you think you'll have your handle on that? When will we have a handle on?
I'll see you next week or seven days.
Okay. Okay.
I'll send you a list next week.
Okay.
She got you.
So is there anything else on the budget that, that you want us to look at, Donnie, or need to point out, or?
Well, a couple of things that we did cover in the red on, on the last page, there's an increase, so that, you know, that's why those were increased. And it, it states it there, well, maybe it is on yours, but it is online. For telephone, another ten thousand dollar increase because of tracking devices that we have on the cars, plus two new cell phone lines, all of that, all that stuff, so we increased it, uh, ten thousand dollars. Travel expenses, we increased that by nine hundred dollars because of gas, parking, hotels, for the, for travel, all of that needs to be covered by employees and elected officials who ever turns in their costs. Other than that, I think that's it.
So background, excuse me, background checks have gone down, so. Office expenses.
Yes.
Uh, the commissioner's budget, is there, did we miss anything? Do you have any questions that you think should be? You've got the road preservation in here. That's That's always a number. Yeah, we, we need to help maintain roads, of course, that's a big number. So do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve zero zero six eight, except for salaries, and increasing road preservation to two eight seven four eight nine seven, increasing Aspire to four eight zero zero nine six, the rest is submitted.
Second.
If part of the move is seconded, is there any further discussion? If not, all is in favor, so anyone saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Thank you.
Motion to recess.
They have a couple items in twelve thirty.
I know, I was kidding.
Do you have, you had a phone call that you
It, I haven't called yet.
Okay, just making sure.
I'll set that when they do.
What did you say?
Twelve thirty three.
Twelve thirty three. And executive project manager, benefits for the project manager, construction of five million, uh, software at ten thousand, engineering and architecture at two fifty.
That went down though, right, office supplies, okay. And then the, but the executive project manager and benefits, that'll be September, is that right?
What's that?
The executive project.
All salaries, uh, it's, this is one that is the LIT fund, so we need to be making sure we're looking at it as a, the LIT standpoint. And what, you know, what we've got in it, in the sheriff's, the sheriff's budget.
So Kay, you mentioned two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is this coming out of the LIT fund?
As far as I know, it was noted as for the Key Bank.
This is for the Key Bank.
Unfortunately, that cannot take place.
Yeah.
How, this one?
And how does that take place?
Out of those dollars?
Out of general, but the two fifty, it was noted as Key Bank building. But we can't pay for the Key Bank building out of this fund.
So what, that would have to be moved somewhere else if it's going to be done? Any corrections, we looked through that with them, with the two fifty on their unit police. Very bad. So this So is there how far out of balance are we?
Five million.
Five million dollars out of balance?
Right. Was that five million, million?
One point two million out of accounting.
Yeah.
Say that again.
Five million out of balance, one point two million that maybe would
To pay for everything that's in here.
So you don't have enough cash for one point two million dollars at all. And if you, otherwise you can spend
So where's the, where's?
So the five million construction, what is that?
So the only things that we have not talked about yet out of this fund are the ones that the commissioners have budgeted, which is construction of five million. Software for ten thousand five hundred, the two fifty for engineering and architecture, and then of course, the salary.
What's the five million for construction?
Finish the project.
Are there details, finish, don't we have the bond for that?
Right, the soft costs were coming out of the LIT, it's been out there from the beginning.
So the, have you already submitted FFNE?
I'm sorry?
Have you already submitted anything for FFNE?
We paid about three and a half million, there's about two and a half million left to pay.
So is this, is this on, probably on top of that?
I'm sorry?
Is, you, you want to scoot up?
Is the five million on top of what you just said, Jim?
No, there's two and a half million left to pay, the five million is put into the budget, just to make sure that there's plenty of room to pay. So we can, it doesn't matter, it's going to stay in that line, whether it's spent or not, it stays in that jail let line.
It doesn't have to, it can stay in the cash balance.
Right, we put it in the cash balance side of the line.
Yeah.
Well, here's it, if it's not, it, it, that's the way we can
If it's in a line, it shows that it's appropriated, which means you can spend out of it, if it's in the cash balance, then it has to be appropriated, so if something would come up, we'd have to go back and put in the council and say, we need four hundred and fifty out of that five million, can you put it in the line or whatever?
Right. Is that right, are we, are we, Joe, just, are we, are we saying this right?
From what I'm hearing right now is correct, so if you go forward, right now with an appropriation of five million dollars, those dollars have been appropriated before, any money can be spent by any department, any municipality, it has to be appropriated first.
Okay.
So if you appropriate five million dollars now, that's past that hurdle, it can't be spent. If you sit it in a cash balance account, so it's not appropriated yet, then in order to spend those dollars, this council would have to take action on an appropriation of those dollars for whatever it is. Is that, is that?
Yeah, yeah, in order to take those actions, we would know, we would need to know what they were being spent on.
Correct, whatever information that each council would need in order to make their determination.
And while, just while you're here, I know earlier we said that two hundred and fifty thousand was being used for the Key Bank, but according to what the build operator transferred and what the bond was for, it has to be used for the Justice Center only, or no?
When you talk about a piece SAP LIT, those funds can only be used for the construction and operations of a rehabilitation or correctional facility.
Okay.
So those dollars are limited to that.
Okay.
Your bond documentation talks about, in your bond, similar type uses of that, but, and I don't know the total financing, how you're doing here, it's one of the things that you guys asked us to take a look at, but I believe that your bond is being paid by the obligations from your, this public safety LIT.
Correct.
Right.
And so those public safety LIT dollars, whatever that bond is set there, those public safety LIT dollars can still only be utilized for the statutory allowance that it is, so regardless of what is going on, you can only use those special LIT dollars for a rehabilitative or a correctional facility, um, construction or operation. And I, right now, my opinion would be that that transfers over to, if you're paying off a bond with those dollars, you, you can't do a workaround statute.
Statute.
Right? If, if you're paying the bond of the public safety LIT dollars, you are restricted by public safety LIT statute.
So the only other question is the software in that particular area, is the software IT, is that for anything?
You pay for Monday dot com and Quill, not Quill, sorry, uh, QuickBooks, those are tracking our expenses and our project managers, right?
Okay.
So Monday dot com is
So to get this i- in, in budget, in line, so the, the five million would, would be taken out and left in the cash balance, and the two hundred and fifty for engineering and architect taken out, and then this budget with what we have actually done previously would be good.
I'm starting to say that again, about five million?
Take it out of this budget.
There's still two and a half million dollars to be spent.
Which, for the FFNE? Which was, which is this year?
No, through the end of the project, so it'll be through the end of this year, and then there'll be FFNE next year.
Well, there's two and a half million that will be left this year, at the end of the year, that has not been appropriated or spent, then you could use that.
So you want, you want to encumber it instead of budget for it? So you want to encumber it instead of budget for it, is what you're saying?
Yes, that would be fantastic, because you have POs or contracts for the majority of your night.
Not all of it.
Not, not all of it.
But by the end of the year, you probably would, wouldn't you?
Depends, I mean, the, the finished product won't be until October.
Okay.
So it could be a little bit
Or that, you know, it may not be ordered till January or February.
Who has the money to pay the paper?
It'd be there.
If we can encumber the two and a half million.
Sure.
As long as there's purchase orders or contracts to go with that two and a half million.
Yep.
I guess my concern is if I don't have a purchase order or agreement at that time, I just don't want it to get spent down, so if I attach like our
Nobody else is spending that.
Yeah, so it'll still be in the cash balance, so it'd be something that, if it, if you don't have a purchase order, it would just be something that the council would
We would just appropriate it next year.
Appropriate.
From the balance.
Yes, because you'll have a cash balance.
So does that mean we leave two and a half million in it now?
There will be this year.
You already got, you already got the money left in your mail.
Yeah.
After what was put in the lines for twenty four, that's, that's what balance you'll have.
Once the project is done, should we, they must cut down on this Monday dot com and project manager?
If you let it down, you won't have access to it anymore.
Yep, and that salary
Paid for licenses, sorry.
No, you're funny, I, I apologize for your
I, I'm assuming you'd want to keep and maintain the access to that information, so we have to continue to pay for licenses unless you know all about that information once the project's done, then.
Well, you could, I used to use Monday dot com, I think you could do a, a data dump at the end of it, but I'll check.
And then the salary, we'll, we'll discuss that in September.
Yeah, it's, it'll be done in April, the project.
So do we have
Projection.
Projection.
Do we have a motion to take the five million out and the two fifty out of engineering and architect to improve this budget?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Should probably move to second then, any further discussion? If not, all is in favor, say by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same side? Thank you. Is there anything else on that particular line that we need?
Is there anything else we need to do with this fund, Susan and Dave, just to make sure?
I mean, that just took care of the It's still, it's still somewhat in balance, the dump took care of the negative balance.
So let's talk about the imbalance, the big, like, other than that, it's still like the, the, I know we voted on The big, like, other than that is still like the, the, I know we voted on it, but it's still the salary piece and the other kind of small, minute pieces that we'll take care of in September, I assume.
I mean.
Well, we got balance to.
I mean, I, you're not gonna balance general fund, I don't think, this month. You gotta cut anything out of that. So you're gonna, you're gonna have an imbalance for the general fund. But I don't think there was anything else. So what, the, the, that still need to come out?
Communications officers, that's not the county general.
That'll come out soon.
It's a PS Lit.
PS Lit in jail.
Uh, highway, did highway have people as well? We took out metal.
They take care of their food beverage problem.
I think most of it was salaries.
So, and then this community corrections is what we did yesterday. At the bottom of this, this is for Nance's five positions.
Yeah, that's where his, four keys managers.
And Nance already. Six, seven, eight. John, Dan, Jerry, Kevin, have you anything else? Let's go make sure they're good. Aran, you're good.
The contract cleaning, I think, was still.
Uh, the what? No, we moved forward with the contract cleaning. We, we picked the contract.
We did.
Yeah. Dan gave us some good feedback on the.
Yeah.
Cost.
Yeah.
Okay, then we move forward with it. But we didn't, we, we. We didn't vote on the contract. We waited for it.
The rest of the.
Oh, I told you.
So we did wait. Today, we need to vote on the, we need to vote on the contract cleaning.
Yes, well, there's, what's the rest of it?
The only votes I have on this one.
Okay, we need to vote on the rest of it, that we talked about with the sheriff's, the sheriff's part of it.
Before we do that, do you have anything else with the commissioners?
Yes.
This is.
And oh seven, five, three.
One, two, three, during the thing.
Oh, seven, five, three.
Let's first the commissioners, then we'll come back to the, is that all right?
Yes.
Where was it, where are we going?
Oh, seven, five, three.
Oh, seven, five, three.
That's an IT.
IT. What?
I'm kinda disapproved.
Do you have an addition?
Let's handle two, three, one.
Oh, it's just a topic for this day.
Okay.
So we received a quote from Sean or a whole paper. And the total that was in the quote is thirteen thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. We heard that there's been several discussions about buying it in bulk. Um, so something that we had discussed was potentially increasing the IT's office supply line by this dollar amount. Just to do the whole buy, and then we could start running up orders to track what the departments are spending on paper and potentially looking at their office supply line, producing that and doing it, because this would be a cost savings.
Sure.
We take the path.
What, what line are you looking at, Karen?
Um, it's fund oh, 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 seven, five, three, office supply.
Yeah, what?
Oh, six, three.
Oh, oh, six, three.
Oh, six, three, oh.
Wait, what?
Oh, seven, five, three.
Oh, seven, five, three.
But it's the third line, office supply.
Okay, yep, yep, yep.
Got it, thank you. So sorry, increasing which one?
Supplies. Can we take one to a thousand?
Right. Thousand.
And which, what do you?
Thirteen, two sixty added to them. So fourteen, two sixty.
And then we've coordinated with IT and Max on what that would look like for delivering and inventorying. And it should be, it should be a reasonable cost.
There wouldn't be a limit placed on departments or agencies, would it? Like, hey, you can only print so much, would there?
Well, so.
Okay.
First off, I am very in favor of this. Okay, I, we've been asking for this for a while now.
We do.
But I wanna be clear on a couple things, okay? When we consolidated the printer usage, toner cartridges and copier invoices to the IT budget, all the other offices went, well, I don't have to worry about it anymore, I'll print whatever I want.
They kinda went.
That's why our numbers keep going up and up and up and up every year. We're printing over two million pages a year right now as a county. Okay? I don't want that to happen with this. So we need to have some checks and balances in place. Because if the offices are no longer paying for toner or paper and it's all coming out of my budget, I don't wanna be coming back to you next year going, hey, I need another twenty grand.
They, they should, because we haven't taken it out of their budget yet.
Well.
I feel like if someone's supplies should go down some of when you.
Well, that's what I was about to say. Is there, is there, is there a way?
Yes, so we have, so with the new copier contract, we got a solution called Paper Cut. And Paper Cut allows us to track the usage of all laser printers and copiers in the entire environment. So I can run a report that shows you the sheriff's office prints X dollars per month, and this is what it costs.
Brittany, why you look at it like that? We did talk about that, we know.
When we go back to the building, I'm really open, it's less paper.
I know. But let me ask you this, are you able to make different departments and agencies their own individual cost center to Karen's point to say, hey, this is what you were paying us supplies, you're a cost center, we, we should do that.
We can't, agreed. And so that's what I'm getting at. We need to, if we do this, we need to establish some policies and procedures to work as a group to figure out the best way to do that.
Would you mind be, would you mind helping put together that policy with department heads? I mean, it's easier for you.
Right.
Because the recorder, the surveyor, everyone knows what their printing.
Right.
Like needs are.
Right.
And they can kinda give you a better idea of like, hey, here's what I'm gonna print. You probably know a better system to put it.
We've had a system in place for over a year now, so I can tell you right now what everybody's printing.
Oh, okay.
So I already know all that. I just think we need to establish those policies and procedures, just so that we don't start going the other direction. That's my only concern.
So with Paper Cut, each department will be given a login, right? And so then you know which department is using, we actually just started using this in my office, and it's.
It's tracked by login, so I can actually get as granular to tell you that Donnie printed X this month, Kaylee printed X this month. I can get that granular right now.
So Donnie printed like ten pictures of a cat and said like.
It doesn't exactly track.
I'm joking, I'm joking with Donnie.
I mean, I can get that granular.
No.
But I just, I just wanna make sure that we're not making a problem.
Debbie's got a question.
I, I'm sorry. A couple of things. First of all, um, I, would it be by the office or by the person that you're gonna track?
I should track both.
So by the office, Deb. Well, I guess what she said, if I print my, and I have to walk up to that printer, like we talked about before, where I have to do it. If I can print it out from my office, I can go in there and do it.
They're talking about the badge printing. We've talked about doing, no, it tracks it regardless. I know several offices don't wanna use the badge printing, that's fine. This tracks it regardless, my device.
The way ours works is like, I print something from my office, I walk up to it, and then I have to put in my number, and then it prints. So I also know no one else is getting my documents.
And we are looking, and some, some offices are looking, the prosecutor's office wants to do that, I know the sheriff's office wants to do that. And we, with the badges that we have, we can do that with this Paper Cut solution, yes.
Debbie, if I can do this, you can.
She doesn't print in her office. Well, first of all, I have the colored copier, let's just go there. And so, um, because I do all my documents in color, so I'm ready for anyone. No, in, in seriousness, I am going to offer, if it's not gonna be more trouble than it's worth, I will still take all of my paper and all of that stuff out of my perpetuation fund, because I'm allowed to do that anyway. And so that might help offset just a little bit of the cost. And then remember, Lisa did talk to you guys, and you know that, with the clerks off of the election stuff. I mean, the billions of copies that she literally has to make. So I know that's huge. So I think it's a great idea, but I wanted to tell you, I'll pay for my stuff if that would help at all as far as the cost is concerned. I'll still pay that up.
And, and I think that's fine. I think the point here is buying it at one time. Because instead of spending sixty, seventy bucks for a box, you're spending thirty-three. So it's a big difference.
I would.
It's, it's fabulous.
I would just, I, I love it. I think my first term here, I about fell out of my chair when I heard how much I was printing.
Right.
If you could come up with a policy, and Debbie, I don't know how you would, you have to figure it out, you're smart enough to do it. If you just take the money out of the budget of everyone of the supply, and with the cost center, you read this. Some of the budget, you know what I'm saying? And then we'll just go back to you all.
To show what each office is spending. And, and, and come, we have a department head, we need to kinda discuss how he wanna make this all.
And Kaylee, there's already a contract in place, or are you putting a contract in place?
No, we just got the quote for now, but that's the number that we've gotten to date, so we could get a contract in place. Something that Sean and I didn't talk about was potentially invoicing department. Do it like a quarterly thing, just to get the supply of money back, so I don't know what that looks like.
Oh, wait, you don't budget for it, you just invoice us, since we've already all worked it for.
I think those are the things we need to discuss, isn't it?
Y'all figured it out.
And you could do that for twenty twenty-five.
And then we would have numbers.
For next year, you have numbers, and you could do.
And then just lower the offices, and then it just.
So is that such a, to assess in September, or are we gonna put this number in here now?
If you wanna move forward, I would suggest going ahead and doing that, and then we'll just work, we'll do the rest of this year on trying to get a policy in place for the New York Star.
Because we wouldn't be able to order until the first year, he's not currently in our budget.
What's that?
Yeah, we order by ours in bulk, and it has our insurance, so. And we, we get it for that price, because we buy it in bulk. So I just don't know if you want us to buy our own, or somebody will bring me a pallet, or.
Those are all the issues, we'll figure that out.
Look, if y'all, if y'all all figure it out, I would love to see it. And I know the county sheriff's department, for obvious reasons, creates more. My last question is, do we charge people when they need to have something?
Yes, there is.
Yes, each office has certain things.
But that's something that was done years ago, have we never updated that fee or anything?
My understanding is that's one of the.
Yeah, have they ever raised it or anything? It's like a nickel a copy or something, ten cents a copy.
What'd you say? What'd you say?
Charge a dollar if it's a full order?
For what?
Certified documents, so charge more, but your average.
Yeah, average.
Okay. Sorry, I know you're walking, we're just talking about, hey, print up stuff.
I got a question. Try to keep on track, but if we're gonna make a claim to pay for paper, I still have to print my claims on paper.
Oh, God. Anyway. Listen, you, you and Sean are the co-chairs of the Paper Committee, so.
It's gonna be electronic.
Y'all figured it out.
I don't want paper.
Well, no, because then I have, then we have to print it, it's your problem.
We need to.
Oh.
So you're asking, so you're asking, aren't we?
Well, we, let's go, let's do this one first. Have you got a second item?
Do you have any more items on this?
Or just this, what we talked about here?
You need to, you wanna do this one. Oh, Sherri, you wanna do it?
Let's, let's make a motion for this, if we're gonna do this copy.
Make a motion to increase line zero, zero, six, three in fund zero, seven, five, three to fourteen thousand two sixty.
It's been probably moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been probably moved in second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all is in favor, simply say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same side? Thank you.
One more thing, was it, you took that two hundred and fifty thousand out for the remodeling of Key Bank? The engineer, so now we need to move that to general fund.
What, can I, what exactly, I'm sorry, I had this, I had a. Court call, I had to step out of court. Um, what exactly, so I missed that. What exactly is that for?
It's for contractors to come in and give us a, a estimate on remodeling of Key Bank for the prosecutor.
Oh.
Because once community corrections, everybody moves out of there.
The prosecutor.
That all has to be remodeled, to move that office to that bank, to that building.
So the cost, just so I'm clear, the cost for someone to come in and give you an estimate is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
It's a, it's engineering, architecture?
Engineer, it's an engineering fee.
Yeah, it's not, it's not for a quote.
Design the whole thing.
Yeah.
What's the, uh?
It's an engineering fee to design the whole remodel of that building. Because once community corrections leaves, that, the second floor, third floor, or fourth floor, whatever they have there, does not have the capacity for the prosecutor to move in there, so that, that all has to be remodeled.
Debbie working with the prosecutor on that, of what the needs are?
Yes.
So they're doing space studies and all that stuff, yeah.
So everything, it's gonna be their floor, so we need a design for them. Want to move out of, out of the other building.
So earlier, if you see, there was a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars spent on another study for buildings and all of that. What happened to that study, and why wasn't that the, or was that good? It wasn't good, so, all right, so where's that study at? Because you, you spent a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, now you're coming back asking for another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we are closely approaching a half a million dollars just to look at designs and studies for a building. And not to mention, you still have to have approval, but even for approval, funds to renovate and remodel the building.
The first was a study on all the buildings that need to be remodeled, there was no designs in that.
So is this a design of the building, or?
Two hundred and fifty thousand for the engineers to come in and re-establish, redesign what the Key Bank building needs to be for the prosecutor to move in there.
This isn't a study, this is just a redesign. Mr. Byer's shaking his head, so I'm gonna let you comment. I'm just trying to get understanding, because it's a lot of money, especially.
It would be for the remodel of the bank.
A remodel is a thing. I've been told in times past that it's a billion dollars estimated per floor.
That's a budget number, yeah, we're working that.
How many floors?
That is a possibility.
How many floors in the building to remodel?
Five.
Five million dollars. I'm enough, but y'all can fill out.
If, if, if we don't remodel that building, just basically on this, the prosecutor's out of the room now, in his building. And we're not slowing down. It gets busier, busier every day. We have to give them a bigger facility. And it makes perfect sense where we'd be across the street from the courthouse.
Let me, let me clarify. Michael Nance and others are in that building now. So are we rebuilding, are we adding on, or are we remodeling? Because if there are individuals that are in there working now, and they're doing their job, I, I get that. But to remodel a building to the tune of a million dollars a floor on the taxpayers' dime, at the rate that we're seeing inflation and people are paying an astronomical amount of money, we just had a gentleman sitting here, and rightfully so, tell us that we needed to spend more money on road conversions and things of that nature. There are individuals in there that are doing their job, and I know Mr. Ken Eastwood is hearing me now. Somebody's gonna move out of that building into the current Key building, and then there's gonna be another request to remodel his building. Where does it end? Like, where does it stop?
I, I don't, I don't think they're asking, I don't think they're asking for a million dollars a floor right now. I think that they're wanting to spend the money so that they can determine what a hard number might be, what it might look like, is that correct?
I, I'm sorry, I, I agree with you, Mr. Lamar. What I'm saying is, what I've heard in times past, that it was a million dollars a floor, of which Mr. Byer just confirmed that that's the estimate. And that was probably about a year and a half ago. So we do add in inflation and other things, so while it's not a million dollars now, but if they come back to us and say, hey, we have to remodel this, that is what it's gonna be. So if you come back, I just go back to it, it's like, if we're moving, you know, an office across the street, and there need to be some upgrades and enhancements to it, I understand that, but are the working conditions so bad that no one can work in that building right now?
Is the prosecutor, how many floors? One floor? Does the prosecutor?
No, they'll take up three, at least two.
How many, how many offices are there now? In the ball, the building now, how many offices are there, and how many offices do you need?
I can tell you on, on, on the second floor, how many different closets they're using as an office, basically.
And I think, I think Jennifer's pulling it up now, because Sherri asked if it's part of our capital improvement plan. I believe it is part of our capital improvement plan. I think the distinguishing factor to note with that is, while it's part of our capital improvement plan, there would be no revenue generated if you go in and you renovate these floors. If you were going to renovate these floors and re, and remodel them, and the prosecutor were to use four of the five, but I could go in and rent out at least a portion of them and recoup that money, I would be okay with that. But if the prosecutor, from what he told us in the past, he wants to, he told me personally, he wants the entire Key Bank building, and he keeps saying that we're growing. I just want this council, this board to be cognizant, we're going back and we're asking for, hey, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars just to look at it, to potentially design it. Then we just spent a hundred and ninety-one thousand.
Yeah, three.
Susan, excuse me, Susan, if I'm not mistaken, with three million dollars, how much do we need to balance now?
You're about three million on the general.
So we need to go back and, and balance three million in the general fund. I just want us to be cognizant, there are a group of people, dedicated county, county employees, working in that building now, every day, doing a phenomenal job. And to my knowledge, they have not come to this board and said, hey, we cannot work in these conditions, we cannot work in these environments. They are dangerous, they are out of line for us, please help us, it is unsafe. Now we're saying, hey, we wanna go in and spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, which Kaylee confirmed was spent earlier this year, and that building was part of that, and they're gonna come back to the council, and I did hear what you said, Mr. Lamar, they're gonna come back to the council and say, we now need to remodel and renovate this building. Mr. Byer, are you comfortable with spending a billion plus dollars a floor as a commissioner and coming back to this council? Mr. Byer, are you comfortable with spending a billion plus dollars a floor as a commissioner and coming back to this council in the next year or two?
Well, at this moment, no, but that's kind of the point of not getting into details.
I get that, but if, if, if you're saying no, you're comfortable with spending two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for potential, no, because we spent a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars earlier this year, which said we could potentially renovate the courthouse and turn it into a bed and breakfast, we didn't do that. So just think about it, two hundred and fifty, hold on, please let me finish, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars was being asked for, a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars was spent earlier this year. Whatever we spent a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars earlier this year on, let's think about that report, what are we gonna do with it?
The hundred and ninety-two thousand is spent on every piece of property, not just one.
Thank you, I agree with that, what are we taking with that report and what are we doing with it?
Every day we put this off, it goes from two hundred and fifty to three hundred to four hundred thousand to that. It's not, if it's a million per floor right now, six months from now it'd be a million and a half, and then another half. That's why we've got to get this planned, we've got to get, looking at what needs to be remodeled, and, and we need to have the prosecutor come in and talk about this because they are out of the room. And then you look at what community corrections has done, they've done a fabulous job over there, they're moving into a whole new facility now. That will make them more, excuse me, that will make them more efficient at what they're doing, and give them more room to bring more employees in. And then Tony, Sheriff has the same issue too, he's gotta bring more employees into that whole system that we just built out there. The longer we put it off, the more it's gonna cost us, and that building needs to be remodeled to move the prosecutor to that building. And we need to have prosecutor come in and talk about this and give us details of why and when and all this, cause it's in the very near future it needs to happen.
I think at this point, we, we've been around it, uh, you know, I'd be okay with waiting till September on this particular item, but if somebody else wants to make. That'd be fine, but I would like to take this one up in September when we do the, the salary. Whatever the motion is at the council.
I would make a motion that we move forward.
It's been properly moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second?
What's the motion?
To move forward with the two hundred and fifty thousand in.
Allocating that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do the study so that we can effectively look at and establish good solid numbers, good management of the property.
Where are we putting it? We've not talked about that.
Where's it coming out of?
What line though?
I, before, what, does anyone, Joel or Bob, what's the jaillet statute? I'm having a hard time.
I haven't.
We already took it out of, you know, that, we're looking at putting in as commissioners by the end of this point in time.
Yeah, I wasn't here for that vote, so I just wanna look at it.
I think it's six, three point six, six, two point seven.
Thank you.
Should be. I got it.
You got it? She's got it.
Does anybody know what the square footage of the prosecutor's building is now, or do you think? And what per floor over here?
It's gonna be, they're not, they're all different. The entire building's thirty-four thousand square feet.
So that's even where Key Bank is occupying that area.
Key Bank has the largest floor, obviously.
Yeah.
So, Dan, you made a motion, and it was seconded, uh, so two hundred and fifty, it looks like, I was talking to Debbie, if we're gonna do it, it should come out with probably a consulting line on the county commissioners, so we adapt to the consulting line, uh, from the county commissioners of two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes.
Is that, is that acceptable with your motion?
Yes.
Is that acceptable with your second, Jennifer?
Yes. So we're moving that line to two hundred and eighty-five thousand?
Yes, that's what we're doing. Are you okay with voting now, Jennifer?
Two fifty. It's three hundred.
Yeah, I can research this and we can come back.
I actually, I guess, I have a, can I?
It's been moved in second.
Can I have more discussion? More discussion, sorry.
Yeah, that's fine.
Uh, and again, we're all just doing the best we can here. Aaron, when you said, I just wanna make sure, like, you said, nobody has come forward around unsafe conditions. Uh, I guess that made me think of a question, I mean, is, the study isn't necessarily necessary because somebody said it's unsafe. It, it would be, I just wanna make sure I'm clear on this, uh, or that I have this right, the study would be showing us how to do a design or redesign of the current office space for a different use. That is, the prosecutor's office is gonna be, and again, I know he's not here, he's up there, but, um, they would have employees doing different things than what the community corrections were, am I right?
Okay.
Would that be, is that right? So when you said un, possible unsafe conditions, I guess it just threw me because nobody's saying it's unsafe, are they? Um, they're just saying, hey, this is, we're gonna go from one use to a different use with some specificity, and again, I, I don't pretend to know that, but is that, is that what it is? Cause I, I, I don't, I, I think we would have heard if somebody said it was unsafe, but you said it, so I wanna make sure, Aaron, did I miss something?
No, you didn't, so, so here's where I'm at. Let's put it out there.
Okay.
There was, there's been two hundred and fifty thousand dollars requested, just trying to come out of the jaillet. It's been rumored, said multiple times, that the commissioners have wanted to renovate and remodel the Key Bank building. And Kent, the prosecutor's told me, oh, I wanna get out of my office, I need to be somewhere different. The prosecutor's offices, which I've toured, I think we all toured, have been there, they perform a function, they're jobbing. They work in the criminal justice arena, similar to what individuals in the community corrections arena does, in the sense of that criminal justice framework.
Okay.
There's a, there's a desk, there's a chair, there's secure areas, they deal with the same type of individuals. What I'm trying to grapple with is, you're going into an office space, you're going from one office space to another office space. And when I say there's nothing wrong, no one has said it's unsafe, how are we grappling with this million dollar per floor, which was over a year ago? Potential plus renovation, like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars redesign, and I'm like, if they're gonna come in here and, and move in? What, what exactly are we redesigning, and, and what I'm thinking about again is, it's four floors that are potentially there. The prosecutor's now on one floor, and I wish Max was here, have we, have we heard of how much the square footage is increasing from where they are now to there? How do we know it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, had to put this out for public bid to understand, here comes, you know, the prosecutor now, he's perfect timing. Uh, my, 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 my whole, my whole take on it is, I'm like, we're, we're literally shifting employees. Less than twenty-four hours ago, the, uh, health department sat here and said, hey, they are, they can't hire anyone because they don't have the space. They, they literally don't have the space to put anyone.
Okay.
So we moved the prosecutor to the Key Bank building, and then we moved the health department hypothetically to the prosecutor's office. What happens when they say, well, we want to renovate the prosecutor's office and we now need two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we wanna spend two million dollars on renovation? And I go back to it, not that the prosecutor's office is unsafe, what I'm saying is like, what's wrong with the current condition? If you wanna come in and you wanna put some new tile and some new carpets and some paint down, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. But a million dollars per floor, I'm, I'm like, man, like, that's, I'm grappling significantly with that.
Yeah, and, and I, I understand that, that's a lot of money, and I think that, I think that that's a bloated number, I think that they're, they're trying to protect themselves as far as establishing a budget. But we don't know what we're gonna get into, you start moving wall, it affect, walls, it affects HPA, uh, HVAC, and there are still some problems in that building right now. As it stands, the HVAC is not as effective as it used to be. So when you go in there, you really have to have a total look at the whole scope, and it's way past my capacity, or any of us in this room, I do believe, to really determine what's effective and what's not, without looking at how they want it designed, what needs to be done? And to make it effective utilization, it's like, I mean, offices in the fifties were set in a certain fashion because that's what they needed. Well, weren't it, it's kind of that, that, the last time that, that they built, they got into that building was when they built it, and what, what year was it that was built?
Well, I'm sorry.
What year was it that that building was built onto?
Oh, late eighties.
Late eighties, so I, we're in a different, we're in completely different environments, so how do we take that space, maximize it, and make it effective for the next twenty years? So that we don't have to circle back around and spend a million dollars a floor again, or whatever that number is, and that's just a hypothetical number, it's an estimate, it's an estimate, right?
Yeah, correct.
So I, I can go back.
That's, you have the engineer come in and, and design it, we don't know.
Yeah, we don't know, so that may be five hundred thousand, it may be two fifty, we don't know.
So what I would say is, again, we could be done with this, we've made upgrades and changes to that building, I know we have, I know, and Max could attest to that, I didn't even go back and get the invoices, there have been changes. That building has not sat the same since the nineteen eighties, and not, and not.
Okay, that, maybe not completely, but it, we haven't gone in and done a completely redesigned either, I mean, we haven't.
That, excuse me, that, that building has had changed and upgrades, I go back to my safety, no one has made changes though. I go back to, to that, maybe it needs to be rephrased. The working conditions of that building have suited those who are workers in it, and for someone to come in and say, hey, we want a renovation, I, I go back to it, this is taxpayer dollars. If we feel comfortable, if we all, if you all feel comfortable saying, hey, whether it's a million dollars or five hundred thousand dollars at the current economic climate where we're in, shame on me if I, if I, if I were, I can't say shame on you, cause some people feel like, you know what, that's okay. But to say like, hey, we feel comfortable, if there was a condition or an environment that had precluded someone from being able to do their job in an effective manner, let's take the word safe out, in an effective manner, from doing their job and serving the public, then that's what I'll say. I'll, I'll use that vernacular in a more efficient manner, so I'll.
I think, the other thing you gotta look at is the efficiency of, of, of that building. We're wanting a whole new group to move in there, and what's currently there, some of those rooms are no bigger than that little space right there for them, and that's not, that's not good for anybody. We need to redesign that so that we are more efficient with that space there, we cannot just move into the way that it's, it needs to be redesigned and be more efficient.
To that point, we might have the same crowded situation in that space that we have over there, if we don't redo it and effectively use it, and I think Kevin, I interrupted you.
Yeah, we got a, a motion in a second, Kevin's got something to say, and I was gonna ask Kent to say something, then we'll go about.
But I think Commissioner Lawson didn't know right on yet, I remember back in October of twenty twenty, I stood, I stood up in this room, and I looked at everybody in the room and said, look, if you guys do not do something, I am not a fortune teller, but I have a feeling, and that's what I said in October. I have a feeling that in November Biden is gonna win this presidential election, and when he does, numbers are gonna go sky high. And unfortunately, I was correct, and what happened at that time, the decision was, and there were four of us on this council that sit here today, that got to make the decision. Forty-two million dollars a year to build that new ju, or forty-two million dollars to build that new justice center, or we were going, or, or were we gonna wait and put it on hold? And I looked at everybody and said, if you put this on hold, it's gonna go up ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty million dollars, it's gonna cost these taxpayers of this county those dollars. And unfortunately, that's exactly what happened, it went from forty-two million to what, what did it end up being?
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine million, and the, the taxpayers of this county have to foot that bill, I don't wanna be snake bit twice. When Commissioner Lawson a few moments ago said each moment we put this off, those numbers are gonna go up, so I'm all for this.
Kenny, before you go, can I speak to the history of the building?
Sure.
So, we bought the building in two thousand and fourteen, that building had not been renovated in many years, and it needed some work. We purchased the building for one point four million dollars. We then, I believe in two thousand and sixteen, issued another bond that not only included some renovations to that building, but it included some bridges, some drainage, I believe, Kenny, if I'm not mistaken, that lit, that total bond of sixteen. Just, okay, bridges and corners.
Roads.
And then a camera system for the entire county, and at that time, anyway. And so at that point in time, what was spent on the Key Bank building was a roof, uh, HVAC system upgrades, uh, upgrades to the elevator system, upgrades to the exterior, to button up the exterior, to make it, uh, uh. There were several things that were done, windows, it was screens put on, or filmed on the windows to lower the energy cost. Those mechanical type upgrades were done in two thousand and seventeen. We have not renovated the interior of that building other than just moved a couple of walls here and there. But as far as any kind of interior renovation, it hasn't done, that we haven't done, there are bathrooms in the building, there'll be ADA requirements, if we change offices, that needs to be done. There's a lot of things that have to be taken into consideration as part of this, and I just want the architectural engineering fees to be good. So, uh, the important thing to remember is, the reason we have that building, the reason we have the building prosecutors in, we were able to buy those buildings for very low cost. The Key Bank building, we passed on a lot of that cost to the renters already, and we really have about forty-eight thousand square feet that we've been using now for many years, will still continue to use, that has cost us about a third or less of what new construction would cost. So now it's time to make that building modern, it's time to make it efficient and make it so that offices can be efficient working in it. It was built as a bank building, it wasn't built for government offices, it wasn't built for a prosecutor's office, there are specific things that you design for those kinds of things. So the history of the building is, it hasn't cost us much at this point in time, and we laid a lot of that cost back on the renters, and the taxpayers have not footed up any of it. So, you know, there's, there's a decision to make, you cannot re-renovate this building, at some point in time you're gonna build a new, that's the decision.
Kent? Don't panic prosecutor, Ken, as it relates to our current need today, prosecutor's offices, if we didn't grow an inch, no, no, no new people, which we're not gonna do it next year, probably not in twenty-six, right? We can get by with what we have, all right? I have people that are, I have a person that's in a, I have two people that are in closets, I have another person that's in an Alco, and I have two people that were in supply, supply rooms. And we can get by. We have issues with, uh, with meeting space for meet, to meet with attorneys and witnesses, but we're getting by. As we grow, and our, our case load in the last two years has matched the growth of the county in terms of the number of cases. So, my understanding is the kind of, we've grown by about two to three percent a year, we've averaged case wise, two to three percent the last two years. This year, we're gonna come slightly ahead, I don't know, up by like one percent, but, you know, we, we go two to three percent, and that's what we've been averaging. So, we are going to need more prosecutors, we're gonna need more victim advocates, we're going to need more, uh, paralegal at some point. Prosecutor's office uses recommendations from the proper justice, and any of our prosecuting attorneys' counsel about your case loads, it's like a winning case load study, it tells us, this is how many people we, we should have. And when I believe it's time to add those people, I come to you and ask, can I need more people, please fund it, and that's up to you to fund this, really, can and can't, I understand that. But we do need to have a plan for where we're going to move, all right? We cannot move into the Key Bank building as it's currently laid out, all right? That office, we, they do not have the spaces that we move to operate in an efficient, effective way, things that they don't have, you don't have multiple conference rooms. I have to have multiple conference rooms, I have jury trial prep rooms, I have to have victim waiting rooms, not just one victim waiting room, I have to have multiple victim waiting rooms so I keep victims apart. And these have to be private, right now, in my personal office, I really can't have personnel meetings where I am discussing personnel matters because our walls are so thick, I can hear the person right next to me. Now, there's one conference room I cannot have a, have a meeting in, because on the other side, there's another office, they can hear everything we're saying, we've met with Max. We've met with Max. We've gone over these issues, but there's no way to fix them because of how our current building was constructed. Even with those renovations. Going into the new building, so, and one, one last thing is that we, we got in there, we did not have the full bill. We, and then we kind of on the fly, without any help from, I think it was just you and me, was it just you and me that, or was it the guy before you? We, yeah, okay, we, we, a prosecutor with no experience, and basically, you know, Max, we laid out the down, the renovations of the downstairs. And I know we didn't maximize the space. And left in those renovations cost you guys nothing. We used federal money, and I used dead money to do that. But if we're going to move us into a new space, we have to make decisions like, okay, how much space are we gonna get? How much are we gonna leave blank so we can, we can build into? I think the Westside Police Department did a great thing when they did. They built their new police station. They left a certain portion just bare. And since they've moved into them a couple of years ago, they've already started adding to it as they can, and when they need to. So those are decisions we have to make. We're gonna need, I, we need experts to help us decide, what's this gonna cost? And how will it look? And what's the layout? And what can we do? I think that there's a difference between allocating the money so we can see what the design should be. That's the first step. Then they're gonna come back with you, here's the bill. It's not saying you guys aren't paying for that bill. So I think it's kind of a two-step process. So, that's all I wanna say. I mean, I might, I might, you guys tell me where we're gonna be, we'll make it work. But I'm telling you, the Key Bank building as it's currently situated will not be, and laid, laid out. It's not being effective way for us to work, and it'll cause a lot of issues.
Very helpful. What square footage now versus square footage that you could take?
So, I, I don't know the exact square footage of the current building. But we need about, right now, today, if we have about four or five thousand more square feet, we'd be fine, today. My thought, and I heard Aaron say is that I said I want the whole building. Yes, I do. Eventually. That's assuming I'm prosecutor here for the next twenty years, which I'm not gonna be. You know, as our population grows, eventually, if we get to the hundred and thirty, hundred and forty, then we're gonna need to have almost double the size of our prosecutor's. We'll need the whole building by then. So the question is, the phase, it's, I mean, that's when we, everyone has to develop, okay prosecutor, you're gonna get this much space, this much extra space, and this much blank space. And we're gonna leave Key Bank down there, and you're gonna be upstairs, whatever, I don't, but we need people to tell us how to do that. And then we'll have a plan, okay, when you get this size, you should pick up this space. When you get this size, you should pick up that space, that type of plan. And I don't know how to do that. No offense. I don't think you guys know how to do that. And no offense, I don't think maybe you don't, I'm sure I know how to do that. And that's why we have to learn, experts help, help us do that. So, that's my two cents. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Ken. What's the, we got a movement, excuse me, what's the motion?
We've studied a line after moving it.
We get you a line?
Yes, it's gonna be, it's a solving line.
Could go to what?
Can it go to CCD?
Okay.
I think we're pretty close on C.
Pretty close on CCD. I would prefer if you're gonna do it, you get another county general.
How would you put, would you, would you, you have one up?
Because it's just for engineering costs. You're not actually doing it.
There was like a plan A, B, and C.
Would he be? Okay.
Get the whole thing?
Use what you can. Dan put in not to receive.
That's all. But it'll come in, it's got the whole thing.
Donnie, do we have?
Is there a separate line?
Do we have quotes yet?
Make a new line for it.
Let's just make a new line for it then, just so that we.
We don't have quotes yet.
We'll make a new.
Do we have any idea?
We haven't got any quotes yet.
Key Bank, Key Bank.
Two fifty.
So we're gonna make a new, are you, are you okay with making a new line under, called Key Bank Engineering? That's two hundred and fifty thousand goes to that line.
Sure.
Jennifer, are you okay with that as a second?
Yes.
So it has been properly moved to second in the county general, the commissioners' budget, a new line, Key Bank, uh, engineering? Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor.
I'd tell you that. I would like to see a Plan A, B, and C. When this engineer comes back. I mean, here is Plan A, that's got the whole floor. B is try to use what offices we can in there. And C would be whatever. But have an option or two, rather than go in and say, we're gonna gut the whole floor out and start over. Or there's offices around the outside that are there, that maybe wouldn't have to be done.
Well, and that, that's where I can be there.
Yeah.
But he needs to be there, because he knows what offices he needs.
But what I'm saying is just when this engineer comes back, kind of have a, the, the luxury one or the big one. But then maybe a Plan B. And then we can look at the cost then, see what we're gonna spend.
But that being said, with that motion, all those in favor of this motion, see if we're saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Aye. So did pass? So, is there anything else we can do at this time? Come back in September?
That's what scares me. That's what, it's just like, just like. We have a choice. I don't want a choice. That's fair. We tried to bring this up to the general name. The guy said in the second row, those two, they didn't tell us that.
Okay.
They say, it's like that, I mean, they, they say, one poll. That's why we're on A, B, and C. If you just give them a blank check, they're gonna go to a million dollar.
We'll bring up, uh, the salaries and stuff in September. I think, and the insurance too. We need to discuss insurance, and also potentially some sort of, uh, what we're gonna do with insurance. At that time also. September seventeenth, the eleventh eighteen.
No, I, we need, we need to do something. We need to go back to PS Lit. And we need to adjust their IT.
What fund?
Does she adjust it in, uh, jaillet? Before we vote on?
No, we haven't voted on that. I just, we have voted a lot.
Okay.
So let's.
Number?
Yeah, what number are we at?
We wanna go eleven seventy, you're gonna, eleven seventy and twelve thirty-three is where we're.
Eleven, go to seventy.
Twelve thirty-three.
What adjustments do we need?
I'll let Tony work it.
Tell me, Brittany, you got?
We haven't voted, I think, at all yet.
Welcome back.
Yes, welcome back. So, PS Lit IT?
Oh, this is where we can go to stuff.
This is where you, you wanna take that one hundred and fifty-five out and go over to jaillet?
Yeah.
And then we have not voted on PS Lit at all.
And I'm still not ready to, because those, my questions about twelve thirty-three still have not been answered. You said they'd come later, but I haven't heard them.
For, we answer them today, with the commissioners.
No, 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 that wasn't my question. Are, like, this fund is gonna be in place for what, twenty-five years, twenty-two, the tax? We're moving a lot of things in here that are still going to be expenses in twenty-five years. And so I have a conflict, like, what is the plan? Has anyone thought about what that looks like in twenty-five years? I don't plan on being here in twenty-five years, but I don't think it's, like, that discussion needs to happen.
Yeah, it's one of those things that, it's gonna have to be looked at, and hopefully the funds keep accumulating to a point where.
Maybe I might have to, what's your question again?
I, I'm concerned that we're putting things in here.
And it can be renewed in the future.
You're talking about, like, putting money back for deferred maintenance?
Yeah, are we putting money back? Are, so the reserve, what reserve are we creating?
We're talking about trying to build that.
Like build up a reserve?
Reserve too, we're trying to.
I just don't think we can do, I just don't think you have the, we don't have the abilities to do that for twenty-five, because we don't truly know all of our costs.
I'm sorry, I should have answered that. Here's what, here's the answer I can get. We looked at, with Scott, and I'm happy to sit down with you after the, and looked at like what a twenty-five year run rate would be. The, the challenge of it is, because we don't know what the full operating cost would be for like the next two to three years.
That's right.
Dan, we did sit down with some people, maybe, we kind of guessed what it could be, but we did say, hey, if it, if we assume that it's gonna be this, this, and that, I think when we got to, Scott, keep me honest, we, we did get to a run rate where we would be able to put up after like fifteen, after five years, we would have a run rate that would start accumulating like two, three, four million dollars for like replacing the roof, replacing the HVAC system. Like, there will be a, to build up.
Yeah, because like, in twenty-five years, where are these salaries gonna be paid?
Right. And what he, what he did with that is, we actually built, we did a bill rate that actually increases the salary.
That's something we can see. Is that something you can send to us?
I, yeah, I, I have, Debbie reviewed to make sure the secrets were.
Great.
So basically, you're trying to like make sure we can keep up the salaries?
Yeah, like, I'm not comfortable voting on this, I think, until I see that, because, like, I wanna, like, you know, I don't plan on being here in twenty-five years, so.
Just wanna set up the next.
Well, we don't wanna leave people.
Right. I guess I'm, the, the five thousand or five million, that came out, right? So.
It did.
It, but it went to the, it went to the cash reserves.
So is there, Scott, like, if this five million is coming out, can, like.
Right, so now it's more, wouldn't it, more balanced?
I guess, I guess, okay. Do we have a rainy, can we have a rainy day fund with it in this, or like a?
This has to just go into that fund. It can only be used for the items.
Which you can build on the cash balance.
If we can see your projection, that'll really help.
Because no one's. Hold so much back, you know, for future expenses and maintenance and future.
You guys have to agree.
Yeah.
And we can do that once we see this.
Yes, one of the things that, um, that has to be negotiated, yeah, we have, is the correctional, uh, communications officer.
Right, we're still.
But this is a work of process.
Okay, yeah, I understand it's fluid.
But I get, I protected it out with increasing some salaries and expenses.
Okay.
And.
How, we really need to vote on items that aren't salary related.
I'm gonna abstain from voting then until I see the projections.
That's good.
I, I mean, I just, I haven't seen it, and I know you invited me on Monday. I don't know if that's, that was for, but I've been out due to a death, so.
I understand that completely. So, yeah, so if we could vote on that, less salaries, because that's kind of where Jennifer's bulk of it was, is where would these people be paid in the future? So that makes sense to do it less salary, we'll just do that part in September.
Can you just go through what those changes are?
Yeah. So, PS Lit, eleven seventy. And the IT, with Sean, um, here's CAD, that's for the new system for the building, so we can pay for that from.
Second.
Uh, the jaillet, so just read that. But then he said she can create a new, new line in jaillet, that hundred and fifty-five thousand. So the new amount in eleven seventy would be nine oh three seven fifty.
Wait, what line item?
Eleven seventy, you said?
Eleven seventy, yes.
But what's?
Second page, nine oh three five.
So you've, you've taken one fifty-five out of twelve thirty-four?
Oh, twelve thirty.
What's your guys' number? I have a million fifty-eight in there. That's what I, that's what I have.
Yeah, because we took out a three fifty-four, seven fifty-four.
Ten fifty-eight.
Nine oh three seven fifty.
Got it.
Right.
I was looking at the, I was looking at twelve thirty-four before it got revised to ten fifty-eight.
Yes.
Yeah, did you get, did you have that revision?
I showed should be nine oh three seven fifty.
Yes.
After you take out the one fifty-five, so it's ten fifty-eight.
Do we need that as a motion? Yeah, you got to formally move it.
Well, we can just make changes and do this, but, but change it in less hours.
Do you have any other changes?
Is there any other changes today?
There was nothing else that you guys asked for on that one.
That was just the IT stuff though, right?
Just the IT.
So, can we have a motion to approve that, less salaries?
So moved. Second? Sorry. Yeah, good.
So, our party members have seconded to approve that with the changes that we just discussed about the IT. And that number would go to nine oh.
Three seven fifty.
Nine oh three seven fifty. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, same as I said, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
I'm abstaining from voting on either of those.
Jennifer, I'm saying, thank you, Jennifer. Now, which one do we need to, is up to?
We were moving the one fifty-five to twelve thirty-three in jaillet.
Twelve thirty-three.
What, what?
New line.
New line?
New line, one fifty-five.
Correct.
It's called IT. Is that what you wanna call it?
We're moving it from, to where?
Before we just came.
Okay, so we're moving it to the corrections.
I mean, now you can call it that, but you wanna be able to, like, possibly.
I would even say the other one, like IT services or what?
I was about to say keep a beard.
Yeah.
IT services?
Yeah, whatever it is, whatever it is, yeah.
IT services, sorry.
Is it called IT? I think it's just called, I use this, I just call IT.
I think it's just IT and.
Yeah, it's just called IT.
How much, hundred fifty?
We have a motion to create a new line in twelve thirty-three called IT with one fifty-five, one hundred and fifty-five thousand?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Should probably move to second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, same as I said, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Karen, do you have that?
Is that it?
I'm sorry.
I just wanna make sure. Is that the other sheriff items in twelve thirty-three, where they're, they're on there?
Twelve thirty-three.
Like the uniform, anything, you guys might have talked about, did you get the uniform on?
Well, I would have had a sheriff.
Because that was on the first day, and like, we wanna talk to everybody.
And have it before he's waiting to find me, because he was out of bounds and all that. So, all those other, that's not, uh.
So you need debt service line, the sheriff lines.
Like you say, uniforms, equipment, EOs, medical, inmates, utilities.
And then all the facilities right after it.
All facilities, so everything in the one, two, three, four, five.
We just discussed it.
The four, three, O's.
I thought we approved his speech. I did too.
I need to get approved.
And one, twelve thirty.
Yeah, twelve thirty-two. Basically, everything, second column's up to the bottom, starting with uniforms.
All the way down to trash hauling?
All the way down to trash hauling.
And include debt service line, just because.
Okay. I move, I move that we approve the following lines in Fund twelve thirty-three, the debt service line, trash hauling, shredding, contract cleaning, utilities, inmate and other supplies, medical hospitality, and prescriptions, meals, and, I don't know what this means. What is this other? Lot, uh, equipment, uniforms, assamini. Gotta get those right.
Is there a second?
Second.
Should probably move to second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, same as I said, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Was there something IT that we need to go back to get?
That's what we, oh, well, that's what we did just now.
I think you start, well, no, oh, that would, it would have been the same again. So, that would have been the same, you guys didn't have, that was the only ones you guys had, those that I said.
That's the one we made note on when we were here.
To come back to.
Come back to, to new jail.
Yeah, our, our big thing was not splitting it up. We didn't want like sixty of it, one and ninety-five of the other.
Yeah, it's all put together now.
We forgot to, or we didn't have anybody to really vote for Fund eleven forty-eight.
Eleven forty-eight.
The, what's that called?
Drug three?
Drug three.
I thought that was just.
That is JDA?
Is it, is it just S and L?
It's literally the same as twenty twenty-four.
Is it, is it grand?
It is, it is, yeah.
That JDS, like grand by.
I move that we approve Fund eleven forty-
I move that we approve Fund eleven forty-eight estimated.
Saying.
Sorry.
Okay, estimated.
It's for classes that will.
Department of Labor moved a second in. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say by saying aye?
Aye.
All post same sign?
Which, I mean, which is okay, I mean, it doesn't really matter. Because we, yeah, we'll come back in September because we'll have front numbers then.
You have anything else?
I'll make the list for.
Yeah, we can make a list.
We're kind of wrapping that up. I do wanna thank council members and the department heads and everybody that's coming to meetings. Appreciate everybody. With that, I think we're ready to adjourn, recess until September. Is that right?
September seventeen, we're not after the council meeting.
September seventeen.
We also have the eighteenth scheduled.
Move that we recess to, to September eighteenth or September seventeen, okay? Is there a second? Department of Labor moved a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye. That's my only concern on that. Thing there is I want a Plan A, B, and C.
Yeah, no, I think that's good.
I don't want one where they're gonna go, we got four floors complete to the, to the wall.
I think that's a good idea.
Or just backs up where we got choice.
I think that's a good idea.